Madam Chair, you have a question.
Thank you. We'll move on now to approval of the agenda. By motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Anyone have any changes?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Okay, then we'll move on for oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward today? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Madam Chair, just to clarify for the audience, the consent calendars include matters that are considered to be routine or acted on at a single time without discussion. So it would be appropriate if there's -- the motion at this time to approve the consent calendar, if that's the sense of the commission.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Been moved by Commissioner Sloan. Is that second? By second. Okay. All in favor with a voice vote, please. The equipment isn't working right tonight.
We just have a roll call.
Okay.
City Clerk, can I call a roll?
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
I'm staying, I wasn't here.
This is an approval of the agenda.
This is approval of the minutes.
Well, I'm sorry, I have to.
Well, given the situation, if -- we can postpone this if people haven't had a chance to look at the minutes. It is the custom of the Planning Commission that if a member had not -- was not present at a meeting, that they do participate in approval of the minutes at a subsequent meeting. Given what I'm seeing here, I see two new commissioners who weren't in attendance at the last meeting, and one current commissioner who was not at that meeting as well. So that leaves with two people to approve the minutes, which is one shy of a majority. We can either -- we can do this one of two ways. We could put this on the next agenda and simply one or two of the other commissioners can review the minutes and perhaps the tape and just make sure that they confirm as to what they believe, that the minutes are accurate. That's essentially the decision being made, asked to make. So as long as we could get that, we could delay this and come back later and prove the minutes, if that's acceptable to at least one more of the members of the commission who wasn't at that meeting. Would you be willing to go back and look at the tapes and compare them to the minutes?
Okay.
Okay. Then my recommendation is we simply continue this item over to the next consent calendar.
So the motions will be withdrawn?
If that is the consent of the commissioner who made the motion?
That's fine.
Okay, the motion's been removed, and the minutes will appear on the next agenda.
All right. We'll be moving on now to scheduled matters. Reorganization of the Planning Commission, election of the new chairperson and vice-chairperson for 2015. We'll call on our planner, Mr. Basham, to handle this part.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as stated, this is a time where motion can be made as to a commissioner being chair. So motion is open. Anyone can make one.
I would like to make a motion that Commissioner Sloan be elected to serve as the new chair.
You want to vote? It would be appropriate to adjutant any other nominations. Seconds are not required for nominations. So there's one nomination put forward at this time. If there are any other nominations, now would be the time to make them.
I'd like to nominate Chair person Cummings.
I will decline respectfully.
Okay. And I guess it's over.
Any other recommendations?
Any nomination?
Okay.
Then the nomination is for Stephen Sloan to be the chair of the Planning Commission. Please vote. I guess roll call.
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sloan?
I abstain.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner Mattin?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairperson.
Now, can we change chairs?
Yes.
Okay, Stephen. Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Appreciate that. Go to conference.
Mr. Chair, you may open the floor to vice-chair nomination.
Do I hear any nominees for vice-chair for 2015?
How about that, Esther?
I'll do that.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Cummings.
Are there any other nominations? Oh, I'm sorry, you actually get to chair the party now. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, let's have a roll call. Vote.
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner Sloan?
Yes.
Commissioner Mattin?
Yes.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
For another year. Okay, moving on, we have new business. The first order of business is a minor use permit number 14-2. Staff, can we have a report, please?
Absolutely. Good evening. Applicant David Chamberlain submitted an application for minor use permit 14-2 to allow a covered roof access structure which exceeds the maximum roof height by two feet at an existing single-family residence. The subject site is a 1,694 square feet parcel located on the south side of Surfside Avenue within Surfside Colony. The parcel is developed with a three-story residence and surrounded by residential uses to the north, east, west, with the beach to the south. The applicant is proposing a covered roof access structure which will exceed the maximum roof height by two feet. The proposed structure will be located on the west side of the building roof. The Seal Beach Municipal Code allows for non-habitable architectural features such as covered access roof decks to exceed the 35-feet maximum height limit in Surfside by a maximum of seven feet with approval of a minor use permit. The proposed structure lies within the parameters set by the Seal Beach Municipal Code because the structure does not exceed the height limit by more than seven feet. Similar structures have already been approved with other properties within Surfside. After conducting the public hearing, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the attached resolution as conditioned. Staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, do we have any questions, and staff? Hearing none.
Excuse me, I have one question. This project calls for a wine cellar?
There's already a wine cellar.
Well, there's already a wine cellar. This is not part of the --
It's already there.
Right.
Okay. Because I saw that, and I thought, you didn't see that on here. Okay, thank you.
Is the applicant here tonight?
No, the applicant is not here.
Not here. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this? Seeing none, do I hear a?
My motion to approve.
I'm going to close the public comment period. Is that appropriate?
Yes.
And what is the pleasure of the commission?
Move for approval.
I second.
To clarify, that is through the adoption of the resolution as presented by staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that what you wanted?
Yes.
And I second it, so we --
The motion is seconded, appropriate to call for the vote. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cummings?
Yes.
Chair Sloan?
Yes.
Commissioner Mattin?
Yes.
Approval of minor use permit MUP 14-2 is a final decision of the Planning Commission. There's a 10-day period to appeal that decision. That appeal period begins tomorrow morning. The second item is minor use permit 14-4. Can we have the staff report, please? Yes. Good evening, Chairman Sloan, and congratulations. Item four tonight is at 126 Fifth Street for a minor use permit, MUP 14-4, to permit an interior remodel of less than 25 percent in this piece involving a kitchen and bathroom within a non-conforming residence. The site location is on Fifth Street, south of Central Way. It's within the residential high-density 20 zoning area, or Old Town. Site is approximately 2,937 square feet. Parcel contains two residential units, one a single-story residence, the second is located above the two-car garage. The reason for the non-conformity is due to the fact that there is only a one-two-car garage on the site, and the site requires two two-car garages for the multiple dwelling units. Also, the density is an issue. The neighboring properties are single-to-multi-family residential surrounding the property. Area of the remodel is approximately 220 square feet inside the single-story resident which is, abuts the Fifth Avenue. There's no expansion of habitable space, and it is within the 25 percent allowed through the review of this application. The remodel mainly involves the reconfiguration of the kitchen and the bathroom. The kitchen is just removing some counter space and putting an island within the kitchen area, and the restroom is basically removing a bathtub and substituting that with a shower Staff has not received any correspondence from the legal notices that were sent out, and staff's recommendation is the approval of minor use permit 14-4 with adoption of Resolution 15-2 to permit the interior remodel of less than 25 percent within a non-conforming residence. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Are there any questions on staff? Is the applicant here tonight? Would you like to make a comment?
Do I press the button first? Okay, it works automatically. My name is Laura Sanders.
Yeah, I'm Tina, with Tina R. Tex.
And one thing that I did want to notice, part of the MUP permit we wanted to do is resurface the roof and resurface the deck as more of a maintenance item, and that was part of the application. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that that was part of this application that were being approved.
That is not explicitly called out in this minor use permit, is it?
Chairman Sloan, if I may. The MUP is not required for the resurfacing of the roof. It's just repair.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this matter? Hearing none, I close public discussion on this. What is the pleasure of the commission?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cummings?
Yes.
Chair Sloan?
Yes.
Commissioner Mattin?
Yes.
Congratulations, it's been approved. Approval of minor use permit 14-4 is a final decision of the Planning Commission. There's a 10-day period to appeal this decision. The period begins tomorrow morning. The next item on the agenda is the conditional use permit 14-9. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman Sloan. Item number five is at 114A Surfside Avenue for conditional use permit CUP 14-9 to permit a structural alteration to a non-conforming dwelling, including tandem parking. The site location is on the south side of Surfside in Row A. It's in with the residential low-density nine zone. Site is approximately 1,300 square feet with a 2,426-square-foot single-family dwelling unit. Site is non-conforming due to front yard setbacks, which is required to be four feet, and the dwelling unit is only three feet from the front yard setback, as are many in Surfside. Neighboring properties to the south is the beach, and on the other three sides are residential, typically, single-family dwelling units. The main focus of this remodel is focused within the garage. Staff has worked with the applicant to get a parking configuration that would work with the development code, and tandem parking isn't allowed parking configuration. Inside the garage currently is an unpermitted storage area and elevator, which the applicant is working towards, if this is approved, getting legalized, and the tandem parking configuration, which would require the lower-level restroom to be removed and new walls configured so that the tandem parking would accommodate the 36 feet in length required measurement by nine feet wide. The elevator itself is on all three floors in this three-story residential unit. As you can see in this picture, inside the garage to on the photo to the right, we have the elevator doors and the storage doors. The rear wall where the golf carts located would be pushed back because that's where the tandem parking would eventually be located. Staff has not received any correspondence from the legal notifications that were sent out, and with this, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 15-3 approving conditional use permit 14-9 to permit structural alterations to the non-conforming dwelling, including a tandem parking configuration. The applicant is here tonight, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions, Mr. Matt? Would the applicant like to say something?
Good evening, congratulations, I think.
Thank you.
Chairman Sloan and fellow commissioners. I don't have anything to add. I appreciate staff's report and working with Mr. Chen and other individuals within the city to make this happen. I'm happy to ask to answer any questions, if you have any questions, but we support the recommendation and hope the commissioners do as well.
You have no problem with the resolutions as they're proposed, Chair? No. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter?
Good evening. My name's Steve Wilds. I'm one of the members of the Surfside Homeowners Association. This has been going on for so long, it's ridiculous. I want to know, if that is approved, is there a timetable that we can count on this residence able to handle two cars?
Yes, there is. That's in the resolutions.
It's in there. Thank you much.
Is there anyone else? I see no one. Mr. Chairman, if the applicant would like to speak again in final rebuttal, it would be appropriate to give him a chance to do so. He's indicating no. Okay. Any comments or discussion?
I do have one comment. In the resolution, it says, "Within 30 days, the property owner shall obtain all necessary permits." Where does it say he'll finish?
The permits themselves will have their own expiration.
No, but I, you know, I know myself, I pulled the permit on the front of my house, and it was never initially signed off because we didn't put insulation around two windows. Some, a couple years later, I came back and I redid the bonus room, and we insulated at that point. I contacted the city, resurrected the permit, and got everything signed off. The point I'm making is, you can pull permits and not get it done.
So staff will monitor this conditional use permit since there's an entitlement that's associated with what's required to be reconverted for the garage area. So there's a timeline. Once you pull that permit, we'll be watching it to make sure progress is being made. So it's a little bit different than when you obtained a permit, it was at the administrative level. This is something that's highly scrutinized because it's an entitlement. It's based upon a resolution for which we will enforce.
Okay. And as some of the commissioners may be aware, there is a prior code enforcement history with this property. The staff is well aware of that, and will be keeping an eye on it. And ultimately, if the work isn't performed, we go back into a code enforcement mode.
Okay.
And that would run its course.
Please come forward, yeah.
Public hearing is closed.
Certainly.
It's closed already, Mr. Chairman.
Let me, apparently, I misspoke, Mr. Wilds. Is there, there is a fast schedule for the alteration of this residence, right?
That's correct. There is a fast schedule. So permits need to be obtained within 30 days, and then from that point forward, he needs to commence the alterations to bring it back into conformance with the Minister Code. We will watch it from that point forward for progress. If progress isn't made, permits do expire. If permits expire, then that's also an enforcement activity for which we will proceed immediately.
So any person, any resident, fellow resident of the Surfside can check with the city on the status of this at any time?
Absolutely. And please keep in mind that this is a process that's afforded to any resident in this community. Once they obtain a permit, it doesn't make a difference of the activity and what's occurred previously. We monitor it, and we stay on top of it. So this is no different, and we won't treat this in any other manner.
Does that mean with your side's stature?
When do we come back and check with you if?
You can call the city at any time and get a status on this.
You can check anytime you like.
Who would I check with?
You can check with the Building Department, and we're on the second floor.
So there's not a date that if it goes past a certain six months, a year, two years?
Permits, excuse me, permits expire. Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind you, the hearing is closed. So my discussions is not with the audience or folks of the audience, it is directly to you.
I'm sorry.
So in this regard, permits expire in 12 months. If activities isn't commenced, you can best believe that we will stay on top of it to ensure that compliance is gained.
After the 12 months?
I'm sorry, Mr. Wilds, the discussion is closed.
I was given misinformation, wasn't I?
You were, and I apologize for that. You can have a copy of the resolution. I'll be happy to give you a copy of it after the meeting, and you can follow up with the city.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. Are there any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
I'll second that.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Pratt?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cummings?
Yes.
Chair Sloan?
Yes.
Commissioner Mattin?
Yes.
Congratulations. I hope we move out quickly on this one. The new business approval of CUP 14-9 is a final decision of the Planning Commission. There's a 10-day period to appeal this decision to the City Council. The appeal period begins tomorrow morning. That completes new business. Move on to the Director's Report. Mr. Director?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, congratulations to our new planning commissioners, Commissioner Pratt and Commissioner Mattin, and also to you, Mr. Chairman. Good job this evening, and we do have an exciting year. There's a lot that's going to be in front of us. Let me pass out to you a flyer. It is on the new website that we have for Swim Seal Beach. The website address is www.swimsilbeach.com. Many folks in the community and merchants have already been on the website since its effective date of opening, which was January 12th. We've had, I believe, over 1,000 visitors to the website. A lot of folks have already provided comments, ideas, suggestions in relationship to a community pool. If you may recall, the City Council did authorize a contract with an architectural engineering firm. The firm is Westburg &amp; White. They are in the early stages, again, as setting up the website to allow folks to participate. The next would be to actually start strategizing and having public meetings at designated areas throughout the city, for which we will provide duly notice information, especially on the website, when these meetings will take place, to further engage with the community. So this is an endeavor that probably will take 12 months for us to bring back to Planning Commission and City Council-recommended site for the construction of a community pool. And it also will include a feasibility analysis and any constraints that may relate to the size of a pool. Obviously, having an area, square footage of an area, is going to pre or dictate as to the size and the activities that can be associated with a pool. So we're excited. It's a lot of work that's before us. We have a lot of project team members that are involved. We have brokers, engineers, architects, public relations folks, so it's a big deal for us, and we're happy that we're going to have a positive and satisfactory outcome. And that concludes my Director's Report. Thank you.
Does the commission have any concerns they'd like to voice?
Ms. Pratt? Not a concern, but I would like to thank staff for the warm welcome I received as the newbie, and walking us, walking me through a few of the things we were going to talk about tonight, and the rules and regulations, so I don't create any problems for you, or myself. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I'm sure I'm speaking for all of us who would like to have you.
Thank you.
Just want to welcome our two new members, and offer my congratulations to the two of you. Thank you.
And I'd like my add my word of welcome. Paul, I know a lot, and Deb, I serve on the library, friends of the library board with, so familiar faces. It'll be great to have you here with us.
I'd like to welcome you as well, Ms. Matin.
Thank you, and I just want to thank staff, Attorney Flowers, and Director Basham for helping me tonight, and Acting City Clerk for all of your help, and all of you for welcoming me. Looking forward to it, and welcome to you, Commissioner Pratt.
Should be good here. I have one question for the Director before we wrap things up. That is my favorite subject, the pier. Have we started the structural analysis on the pier? And if so, when can we expect a?
a analysis to be complete?
So the draft analysis is complete, is with the Engineering Department, and they're reviewing it at this, at this time. Recommendations will be made to City Council hopefully shortly.
Shortly being the next month or so?
I would like to believe that it'd be within four weeks.
Great, thank you. Well, if there's no other, no other matters to discuss, I adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.